Good afternoon. I'm Andy Bound, and I serve as Chief Operating Officer for Ivy Tech. And I'm here with our President, Sue Elsferman. Thank you for joining Sue and me this afternoon. We're here to answer questions that have come up since Friday's Town Hall meeting announcing Ivy Tech's reorganization structure. More than 1,200 of you joined us on campuses around the state, and more than 1,400 people have watched the video online since then. We've had more than 780 questions submitted by Saturday evening. We won't be able to answer all of those questions, but we'll spend the next hour answering as many as we can. Sue?
Where there were similar questions on a subject, we've grouped them together and will provide you as much information as we can. As I said on Friday, these are big changes, and there are also some things that are still in the process of being determined as we go forward. We'll try and be clear when decisions have been made and when we're still in the process of determining solutions.
All right. So let's start with the Central Office, or what we're now referring to as the Systems Office. Sue, how will the President's role change?
Thanks, Andy, and thanks for those who asked. It made me really think about what the President's role is, and so let me share what those high-level roles are as President. First, I see modeling servant leadership and mission-driven behaviors as something I hope I do every day. With others, it's about crafting a compelling, shared vision, mission, and strategies, which, as many of you know, that's exactly what we're doing right now. It's about inspiring all Ivy Tech colleagues to be mission- and outcome-driven, collaborative and innovative. It's about developing an agile, innovative, employee-driven institution built to last, built to change, and home to the most talented. And it's communicating with key stakeholders Ivy Tech's role as Indiana's key higher education partner for all Hoosiers, including the General Assembly, which funds 50% of our budget, the Commission for Higher Education, which shapes higher education policy for the state, and the Department of Workforce Development, our primary partner in promoting workforce development, as well as inviting non-government funders and philanthropy to support our mission. All of this ensuring future funding for our mission. My role with chancellors will remain blowing barriers out of the way and helping to create an empowered, supportive environment where we truly are all rowing together in support of our students, communities, and employers. I will continue to provide leadership to and for all parts of the institution. In the previous structure, I had 20 direct reports, much too many for effective coaching, mentoring, and supervision, especially across 30 locations in the large state of Indiana. The new structure elevates the COO, Andy Bound, and Northern and Southern VPs to support 19 chancellors with full accountability and responsibility for their campuses. I will retain, as you see on the chart, all System Office Senior Vice Presidents, including Provost, Workforce Alignment, Operations, HR, Finance, Information Technology, Student Experience, Marketing and Communications, Foundation, as well as Change Management, Diversity and Inclusion, and Audit. Still 11 direct reports. Ivy Tech has a big mission for Indiana. We are the nation's largest singly accredited community college. If we don't operate on all 12 cylinders, Indiana won't achieve the Lumina goal of 60% having post-secondary degrees or credentials by 2025. Employers won't have the middle-skills workforce they need, and Hoosiers will not achieve the prosperity available to them. My job is to help ensure, empower, and inspire Ivy Tech, each one of us, to fully contribute to helping Indiana achieve these goals.
Will there be a Central Office? And if so, what will their role be?
Well, yes, there will still be a Central Office, though you heard us use the term "Systems Office." The Systems Office will continue to provide guidance and support to the campuses, provide statewide functional leadership, as well as ensure we maintain our singly accredited status with the Higher Learning Commission. Specifically, the Systems Office role will be categorized in five main ways. Number one, policy and procedure, that is, policy leader, conveyor of information, campus support, and subject matter expert. Two is really resource management, stewarding and an allocator of resources, financial aid administration, efficiency and equity evaluator, book of record for the entire system. Three is compliance, the HLC accreditation, program accreditation, compliance related to employee relations, disability services, Title IX Act, government relations required for compliance reporting and grants administration. Four would be strategy, statewide strategy, where the facilitator of best practices, talent and resource development, metric alignment, process improvement, and change management. And finally, I would say five, it's really about empowerment. It truly is our desire to create greater levels of empowerment in regard to campus-level decision-making, of which one of our responsibilities is establishing the boundaries within which empowerment and autonomy are granted. As we work through this year-long implementation plan, we will continue to be transparent with all those in the college about the role of Systems Office.
So Sue, there was no mention of any reorganization of the Systems Office, even though better relationships between the campus and the region certainly were mentioned. Other planned changes?
We touched lightly on them, but let me touch a little more on those changes to Systems Office. Some of those changes will be, as the campuses bifurcate with student affairs, the role of enrollment services will be part of Senior Vice President of Student Experience, Marketing and Communications Team, which aligns today. However, the role of student support will now be part of, Andy, your Chief Operating Officer's team. Additionally, while career development will be part of the student support services team on campus, we are realigning that role to workforce alignment, which is in alignment with how we meet high-demand, high-wage jobs. Each of these changes aligns with campuses and communities. As additional decisions are made regarding the hubs, changes may be made with the Systems Office in those regards as well. Over the next three to six months, we will also continue to assess the best possible Systems Office organizational structure to ensure that campuses are supported.
As a now decentralized system, what kind of support will campuses receive to achieve enrollment and completion goals?
To be clear, these changes in organizational structure are not creating a decentralized system. Ivy Tech will continue to be a singly accredited statewide college, and the Systems Office will support the work done on the campuses and the sites around the state. Systems Office will continue to support the now more targeted work with each campus on marketing of high-demand programs and expansions of student success programs, such as our Inside Track program, which will now be supported or support even larger numbers of at-risk students.
And Sue, when will these service areas be determined?
Service areas have been drafted, and they are being vetted with our State Board of Trustees, and will be further vetted with the chancellors and the communities, all being finalized and published by June 30. We also believe that these boundaries will continue to be refined annually, really based on workforce shifts and community changes. This is one of the reasons we recommended dissolving regional boundaries to the State Board of Trustees.
So when is this all effective? What date does the new structure start? What's the exact effective date for when region or bi-region become a campus, campuses become a site, and so on?
So, as we'll place up here, the implementation plan was shared on Friday. It continues to be developed, and you note that it does span over, really, a full year. Though, look at the front load of most of the activities. The current version has the following main subcategories: communications, hub development, student affairs, process and continuous improvement, human resources, academic services, IT system changes, facilities, and finance budget. Each sub-project will have a lead person and will form a team to work on the items related to that area. The implementation of the new structure will be phased over the year. Included in the implementation process is a team from Systems Office visiting each campus between July 1 and October 1 to provide technical support in the areas of human resources and budget development. Throughout this process, a timeline for each campus's implementation will be developed.
So how can it be said that regions will no longer exist when Indiana Code 21-22-6-1 states that the State Board of Trustees will divide Indiana into appropriate regions? Will there be legislative action required for this organizational change?
So now I speak as a past state legislator. There's a distinction in state law between what are called the "may provisions" and the "shall provisions." Indiana Code references related to Ivy Tech's State Board of Trustees are "may provisions." That is, giving the trustees the option to divide Indiana into appropriate regions but not requiring them to do so. The Systems Office will continue to work with the state legislature and our State Board of Trustees to ensure we are meeting the requirements for legislative action. In the interim, we will be meeting with and keeping intact the regional boards.
Have we thought through or thought about how this reorganization will impact our technology systems, like Banner? We'll need to reorganize the backend technology.
They are correct. The Systems Office has had several discussions regarding how our technology platforms will need to be updated in order to reflect the organizational changes. The implementation plan that you saw reviewed, how we're doing current technology, not just limited to Banner, but that plan is being developed and will address the changes that are needed over the next year.
Okay. So now we'll shift gears and talk about academics and workforce alignment. What happens to workforce alignment in this new structure? How will workforce alignment and academic affairs work together and flow? As a result of this restructuring, what will be the fate of corporate college?
So, as a reminder to everyone, more than a year ago, Ivy Tech's Corporate College was reimagined in what today is workforce alignment. Because most of the organizational structure work has already taken place in workforce alignment, they are operating in the new model, there will be no additional changes in that area related to the organizational structure project. It is important for the success of our campuses, our students, and employers that we have a seamless approach of responding to and anticipating the needs of our communities and employers. The return to the school structure and serving Indiana's five key economic sectors addresses the bilateral structure we have around instruction and learning. These moves support students who are seeking to go directly into the workforce with their newly-developed knowledge and skills, as well as our students who intend to transfer to one of our fine baccalaureate partners. Accordingly, the important role of workforce alignment is that workforce alignment consultant, which will report directly to the chancellor at the C1, C2, and C3 level campuses, and they will also sit on the campus cabinet.
How will the academic structure change?
Some areas of academic affairs will remain the same, but the structure that has been divisions will now move back to the format where programs are housed under schools. Remember, that's a return to the past. There will be seven schools in total, shown up here. The School of Business Logistics and Supply Chain, School of Public Affairs and Social Services, School of Information Technology, School of Arts, Sciences, and Education, School of Health Sciences, School of Nursing, and School of Advanced Manufacturing Engineering and Applied Technology.
Sue, how will the curriculum committees align with the faculty council? Or maybe they won't. How will curriculum committees work?
Curriculum committee structure and makeup will not change at this time. They will continue to focus on discipline-specific curriculum decisions, such as credentialing standards, maintenance of course outlines of records, and outcome assessments. C1, C2, and C3 campuses will have curriculum committee representation. During the discovery phase, the team did note a series of recommendations to help curriculum committees work more efficiently, which will be further reviewed during the implementation phase of the overall structure. Faculty councils will be independent from the curriculum committees. The campus-based faculty councils will be present at the C1, 2, and 3 locations. Recall that S1 and S2 faculty will participate in governance at their corresponding C1, C2, C3. The State Faculty Council will be comprised of the faculty council leads from the C1s, 2s, and 3s. Faculty councils will provide the opportunity for faculty members of all ranks to have a broader voice in academic policies, procedures, and initiatives.
Will program chairs continue at sites? And will program chairs continue to make class schedules?
So this is yet to be determined, and will be dependent upon programs offered at sites, along with the size of those programs. As part of that restructure, job descriptions will be reviewed and revised, and will include a revision to the program chair role or distinction as the academic structure shifts back to the schools.
How will online courses be coordinated? Will there be a look at the online structure?
Well, prior to the organizational structure work, one of our campuses identified the need to review our online course scheduling and structure. As a result, there presently is already a simplex team looking at the overall scheduling and delivery of online courses at the college. We are utilizing the simplex process of creative problem-solving to help us address this, what we call fuzzy situation. As the simplex process moves forward, we will ensure the results of that process are shared with the organizational restructure implementation team.
Does everything we offer now academically fit into one of the schools listed in the new model? Will anything be cut?
Well, at this time, there have been no recommendations made by the restructure team to cut or close down programs. Every program that existed under the division structure has been placed under one of those seven schools. However, independent of the organizational restructure project, workforce alignment and academic affairs have been evaluating programs per the program review process as part of the work that we do with the Commission for Higher Education. This includes, among other aspects, studying the current and the forecast workforce demand and actual enrollment and completions in these programs. Pending that evaluation, programs may be eliminated in the future.
Will there be a vice chancellor of academic affairs at each campus?
Yes, there will be a vice chancellor of academic affairs at each of our C1, C2, and C3 campus levels. It should be noted that there will be a period of transition, though, as the implementation for the organizational changes is anticipated to take as long as a year. As such, the vice chancellor role may need to be shared across campuses during this transition period.
Okay. Well, how will the reorganization affect areas not indicated on the slides, specifically the campus libraries? The libraries are technically student-facing, but have bounced back and forth between student and academic affairs.
And we are very thankful of the service of our libraries. Academic services and supports were thoroughly considered by the team and will continue to be as the implementation begins. Each academic service and support will be decided upon individually as to how best it would work to serve students and put in place accordingly. This is an area where the team will continue to work, and final decisions will be made over the course of the implementation period. So, now it's my turn to ask you, Andy, a few questions. So, as we think about the campuses, will there be clarity of metrics that decide right program, right size, right place, and the relationship to C1, C2, C3, and S1, S2? Specifically, how do you categorize campuses?
So the methodology to determine campus and site levels was developed and refined by the organizational restructure team with the assistance of our Decision Support Services Team for data collection. As you'll see on the slide, specifically, the criteria included population using the 2010 census data, head count without dual credit or apprentices for the 1617 academic year, non-credit head count, again, for the 1617 year, and FTE and completions per 100 FTE based on the Aspen recommended calculation, again, for this current year, and workforce demand, excuse me, workforce demand data from Burning Glass. Further detail will be provided when the FAQ document is provided on our website.
Andy, how often will the campus and site levels be reviewed?
Sue, the campus and site levels will be reviewed annually based on the criteria that we've set. Data will be provided from Decision Support Services for that annual analysis.
And where will the sites report to, and how will you choose which campus the site will report to? Are the current sites connected to their same campuses?
You know, in many cases, the sites have an existing natural reporting relationship. A set of criteria, though, are being developed to guide the reporting structure. Sites will report to a campus and can report to a C1, C2, or C3 depending on these criteria. Site reporting structures will be determined no later than October 1st.
Will the sites have their own advisory board?
Sites may, but frankly, they won't be required to have their own advisory boards, as they'll share the Community Board of Trustees with the campus they report to. Site leadership will play an active role with the Community Board of Trustees to ensure their needs are represented. Additionally, a site advisory council made up of the site directors and site managers from across the state will be developed with representation from each site that will be managed by the Systems Office. This is to ensure that the voice of sites is heard in the Systems Office.
So what exactly will the campuses be empowered to do that they weren't able to do previously? For example, will the chancellor have the autonomy to determine where key functions are housed?
So each campus will have a chancellor, and the site will either have a site director or a site manager in that leadership role. These individuals will be empowered to make the best decisions possible for their campus. A recommended organizational chart is currently being developed and will be provided for each of the C levels and DS levels. The chancellor or site director, site manager, will be asked to keep the recommended cabinet levels in the organizational chart, but they'll have the ability to make the best decisions regarding the reporting structures under the cabinet level based on the campus or site needs.
So let me switch gears to some human resource concerns.
Okay.
If campus chancellors are to be named by August 1st, do we have a timeline for naming the other C3, S1, and S2 chief executives?
So yes, there is a process and a timeline for naming the chancellors and site directors and site managers. Chancellors for C1, C2, and C3 level campuses, they'll be named by August 1st. And the site directors and site managers will also be named by August 1st. If, however, there's a vacancy in the campus or site executive position, we'll begin a formal search process as quickly as possible. Please be assured that we'll work as rapidly as we can to name these positions, which will be key to moving into the new structure.
And what will the role of the current campus president be?
So in the new organizational model, Sue and colleagues from around the state, they'll no longer be campus presidents. This role will be called chancellor. And as a result, we'll have 19 chancellors system-wide. The updated job description for chancellor is currently being developed, and it'll be completed by the end of June.
To whom are the campus chancellors reporting?
So the campus chancellors will be reporting to one of three people, depending on their location. Senior Vice President or Chief Operating Officer, I guess that's me, and then the Vice President of Operations for Northern campuses, and the Vice President of Operations for Southern campuses.
And will the VP of Operations for Northern campuses or Southern campuses have a staff or a team to assist with that operational oversight and support of campuses?
So the chancellors will report to, you know, one of these three people, and now we're specifically talking about the VP of Operations. However, the VP of Operations will not have additional staff reporting to them. The role of the VP of Operations is frankly to support the chancellors in this restructure, to model, identify, and encourage the sharing of best practices across campuses, and establish clear expectations of chancellors and student recruitment, retention, completions, and fundraising. And then finally, to ensure that all campuses really are meeting the needs of students and the communities they serve.
Since there won't be layoffs, might some people get offered to do a different role than they have today, and how will that impact their salary?
Always a sensitive issue.
Yes, it is.
As we mentioned in the Town Hall, the project is not aimed at reducing head count or eliminating staff. Similarly, that's a hard word to say, we're not going to add staff. It is possible that you may be offered a different role than you're currently in today. Salaries will not be cut as a result of the organizational restructure, but you may have different duties than you have today once the implementation is complete. We would also like to reiterate that this is not a budget reduction project, though we do anticipate cost savings over time with more efficient operations and growth in enrollment and completions. Let me thank you, our Ivy Tech colleagues, in advance for your willingness to make these anticipated shifts in roles to serve our college, our students, our communities, and our employers even better.
So the current organizational structure within the bi-regions includes presidents, vice chancellors, deans, program chairs, et cetera. What happens to those positions?
So in the current bi-regions, these roles played by shared leadership currently exist, and will be reviewed to assess how well the shared process is working, shared structure is working. We ask for your patience as we work through this process of ensuring the campuses are staffed at appropriate levels. As mentioned, the focus of the restructure is not to eliminate jobs, but in some cases more to result in a change of role. We anticipate creating a talent pool, which may provide a temporary assignment for individuals displaced or in transition.
So is the committee reviewing all jobs throughout the college, or just leadership?
So now the team is really focused in on the original organizational structure, reviewing leadership job positions, job descriptions. The hope is to standardize job descriptions across all levels. And the current focus, as you'll see on the slide here, is on chancellor, and then our vice chancellors of academic affairs, vice chancellor of enrollment management, and of student support, as well as the executive director of operations, executive director of development, and then our site director at the S1 and site manager at the S2.
Very good. So how are small campuses, like Marion, for instance, going to get student support services that are currently provided by Muncie and Richmond? This is your old stomping ground.
It is. It is. I was pleased to see this question out here. Took me home. So the smaller campuses and sites will get student support services through a shared services model with our larger campuses. In most cases, the shared services currently exist and are working quite well. These will continue to function. If there are cases where the shared services aren't working well, the campus chancellor team will address this with the help and guidance of key leaders and those of us within the Systems Office. As part of the implementation project, we'll look at these shared services and determine if there are gaps. Our top priority is to ensure that all student-facing needs are met at all campuses and sites across the state.
So one of our most popular questions asked was, please explain what the hubs are. We mentioned them, we didn't go into great detail on Friday. What is their purpose and function? Who will the employees be of these hubs? Who will hub employees report to? And how will the hub model impact the campuses? Pretty much just explain fully hubs, Andy.
Yeah, thank you, because it's a simple, easy answer. The fact is, we're working through that, and so let me say this. Shared services in the consolidation of business operations that are used by multiple parts of the same organization, a shared service center, or as we're referring to as a hub, is the entity responsible for the execution and the handling of specific operational tasks, such as accounting, or human resources, payroll, IT, legal, compliance, purchasing, and security. The closest example we have today of the hub model is our current information technology shared services model. Shared services are cost-effective. Shared services are cost-effective or cost-efficient because they consolidate back-office operations that are used by multiple divisions of the same organization and eliminate redundancy. Hubs will eventually be developed for many of our backend services. The employees will be existing Ivy Tech employees, both in the systems office and around the state. Until the hubs are fully developed by the Ivy Lean or through the Ivy Lean process, we won't know where the hubs will be located or frankly, who the employees will report to. The goal of the hub model is to increase the effectiveness and efficiency of backend operations, and the impact to campuses will be the ability of the campuses to redeploy resources to focus on student-facing and community-based activities.
And actually, that was really one of the big ideas to come out of our organizational restructure team. So not, we know and want to assure all of our employees, our colleagues, that this is a big idea that we know requires some further development. It took, my understanding is it took a couple of years here to get IT operating at the level today. We can't imagine going back because our IT team services are so well and provide such high quality. So this is a big step to take forward.
It sure is.
And we'll all get our heads wrapped around that. So further on the hubs, who is determining what processes fit the hub model? And how are they determining it? Could you be specific? And they say specifically, thank you for being specific.
You're welcome. The organizational structure team brainstormed a list of potential services for consideration. The list was refined by the team of your peers, from over 50, a list of 50 to a prioritized list of 36. The shared services considered for further study were prioritized by executive council, so Sue, that's your cabinet, and all of our chancellors from around the state. And so let me back up. The shared services considered for further study were prioritized by executive council, which consists of what I just said. I think I'll reread that section.
Okay.
Live on TV. Each service was subsequently ranked and scored. The following list is the outcome of that exercise. So here we go. Well, let's start out with administrative services. So this is a prioritized list from highest ranking, highest priority to lower priorities. And so we start in the area of finance and specifically talking about accounts payable and bill paying. In finance, again, purchasing card management and compliance. Then we shift to marketing and talk about website maintenance and design. Then we go to payroll, and we talk about time cards and redistribution. And then we go to HR, again in payroll, and we talk about contract entry and job assignments. In finance, we'll go back to finance, and we're talking about purchasing and compliance. And finally, also, in this first group of seven, travel reimbursement within finance. The next group of seven in that priority list, HR, really being data entry into Banner for marketing and media buying, and then to facilities, capital projects from a design and management standpoint. Finance, again, both grant budgeting, monitoring, and compliance. It's all around the grants function. Grants specifically around financial and fund management, those two are very closely related. HR from a strategy standpoint, and then security, both from a leadership standpoint and really around clarity reporting. If we were to shift now to the next group, it's really around student services. Financial aid processing, recruitment measures, tracking, and training. The registrar, and specifically student records, and financial aid counseling. Further work on the shared services hubs will follow the Ivy Lean process, and projects will begin in the fall to consider each individually. An important part of the Ivy Lean process is including campus-level staff who are currently doing or lead these processes and to engage them in the decision-making process. Implementation of this model will be thoughtful and deliberate. As we further define the services under consideration, this is an initial priority list, and it may change and should not be considered a final list.
So these are referenced in our implementation plan, beginning the work this fall, but knowing that based on priorities, some will move faster than others, but great opportunities available. So another question, if the regions are split up, how will larger shared roles be handled? For example, each campus cannot have a full HR department.
So regions and bi-regions will no longer exist in the new organizational structure. We've stated that before. The hubs will eventually provide the backend services that had been provided in the region and bi-regional structure. In most cases, these shared services currently exist and are working quite well. These will continue to function through the planned implementation period, you know, starting in July and taking it through to June of next year.
Are we still going to have a uniform Ivy Tech approach? Or are we still going to, and are we going to share HR, payroll, marketing, finance, BERSAR, career services, registrar? Will this be one of the hub services in development?
So the statewide Ivy Tech community college system will remain and will continue to have a uniform Ivy Tech approach. Will continue to share services across the system. The systems office, again, formerly central office, we're going to keep reinforcing that one, will provide guidance and support to the campuses, as well as ensure we maintain our singly accredited statewide status with the Higher Learning Commission. Thus, some policies and procedures will continue to be standardized as required. However, local autonomy will be given when possible and appropriate.
So let's shift gears into foundation.
Okay.
How will the Ivy Tech Foundation work now? Currently regional, will each campus have its own fundraiser?
So certainly, at C1 and C2 campuses, we'll have an executive director of development. That person will serve on the cabinet and report to the chancellor. At C3 campuses, we'll have the ability to hire a part-time development director who would report directly to the chancellor as we recognize the importance of community-based relationships. We hear that over and over again. In some cases, this function is a shared service across campuses and is currently working. These will continue to function through the transition period. As a part of the implementation project, we'll take a look at these shared services and determine if and where there may be gaps.
All right. And another area now, particularly student affairs. With the student affairs bifurcation, as we talked about on Friday, will the roles be clearly defined and made known? And what is the reason for bifurcating student affairs?
So yes, I mean, simply yes. The roles will be clearly defined and made known specifically for C1 and C2 campuses. The job descriptions for these two roles are currently being developed and will be finalized by the end of this month. Our vice chancellor of student affairs has been doing yeoman's work along with their teams in regards to both enrollment services and student support. Your peers on the organizational restructure team, including those who work within student affairs, felt it was frankly too large of a role for any one person to oversee due to the complexity and the size of a larger campuses and our current enrollment declines. Likewise, we see persistence as our largest challenge to student success. In the new model, the student enrollment services will be focused on recruiting new students, high school graduates, and working age adults, and ensuring our prospective students transition to Ivy Tech smoothly and are well-prepared to start their classes. The student support services will really focus in on ensuring students have the resources needed to be successful once they've entered Ivy Tech as they pursue their degree or credential. You know, too often, we look at our enrollment numbers and focus on recruiting, bringing in new students, instead of placing equal emphasis on current students and ensuring that they have the tools they need to complete courses and continue the next semester without stopping out. This change will allow the college to provide more attention to the services we provide students in these areas.
So what does the student affairs bifurcation mean for a site? These S1s and S2s?
Right. So for a C3 level campus, the recommendation is the student affairs role, because we haven't, we talked about C1 and C2, but we also talked about S1 and S2. Kind of in the middle is that C3. And that is a combined role managed by one person because of the lesson, perhaps, complexity and scope of the C3.
And the fewer students that they're going to be seeing, yeah.
The role will be vice chancellor of student enrollment and support. A site will continue to provide the level of student services it needs as determined by the team there, the site director and site manager, and the campus chancellor to whom his position reports.
Very good. So the departments of financial aid, veteran services, and registrar were not addressed directly. Where and how do these departments fit into the new structure? Will there be directors remaining in these departments? Will all boxes and referred to items like Title IX be director positions in student affairs?
You know, it's important to note that the bifurcation of student affairs and these roles, the roles, and not necessarily positions. In some cases, there may be multiple positions covering the same role, and in other cases, one position may encompass several roles. Areas within enrollment services include express enrollment, admissions and recruiting, K-12, really referring to enrollment, recruitment, and completion, so that relationship to the K-12 partners and their students, financial aid, student records, the BERSARs and student accounts, which by the way, gets further study, and intake advising. Within student support services, we're talking about wraparound services, career development, mentoring and coaching, student life, leadership and development, and then things like, services like disability support services and Title IX and student discipline, as well as academic advising, which again, is receiving further consideration. You'll see it in purple.
Very good. What is the organizational structure team trying to decide? As you mentioned, those purple, what are they trying to decide regarding where BERSAR and academic advising go? And what's the timeline for those?
So for those areas that really require some additional study, again, academic advising and the business or BERSAR's office, we're going to utilize the RACI model to further evaluate what makes the most sense for those functions, where to be housed, and so forth. They cross multiple functional areas. For example, with the BERSAR's office, it includes student-facing functions, enrollment services, and finance. Similarly, academic advising encompasses academic affairs, enrollment services, and student support services. This is currently being reviewed, and it will be our plan for those to be completed by October 1st of this year.
Very good. Okay, so I think we get to switch again.
Oh, we get to switch. And for those of you, we are getting closer to the end.
Yes, we are.
How will this, let's think about communications now. How will this affect marketing and our website? Will campuses have control over websites now?
Well, the student, the content management system, design elements, and overall composition of the website will continue to be managed by the systems office, with campuses continuing to manage the campus-specific information provided on the various pages of their own website. There is great value in marketing one consistent brand and experience across the state, just like, Andy, you and I know, many companies are very familiar in making sure they brand themselves. So we'll continue to focus efforts on marketing-specific programs as determined by the campus, something that began this spring to focus on those high-demand jobs. This is an ever-changing world, and we have a team always looking at the best practices and research to drive our strategy. What we continue to learn will drive our structure and the approach we take in the future, along with impact from systems office and regional marketing team members. So we'll figure this out, but expect continued high-level control and framing by central office.
We're serving students, but how do we serve communities in this new structure?
That's, it's a great question. The new model includes the movement to community board of trustees, which we think is very important to be community-centric, and each individual community will have their representatives that know their area best and are able to provide specific guidance and support to the campuses, as opposed to that broader regional or even bi-regional a focus. Further, we believe campus chancellors, along with executive directors of development and workforce alignment consultants, will create deeper and stronger ties to each of our communities as they are no longer spread across multiple campuses and/or regions.
So when and how will this be rolled out to the community?
As part of the communications developed by the organizational restructure team and systems office communication team, we have incorporated actions to communicate this with local communities. Included in this plan, as you'll see above, are direct communications to local elected officials, regional board members, general assembly officials, workforce partners, foundation boards, and local media outlets. Many high-level leaders have already been notified, and many more communications will be made over the coming months. Our messaging is, we're putting more community in community college.
That resonates, doesn't it?
It does, and it should, because that's what our communities want.
Absolutely. So we've talked about how we'll roll out with the community and those that we serve, but how will students, how will they be notified?
So most important stakeholder in this whole picture, the student.
Absolutely, that's what it's about.
The good news is the direct impact to students from this organization restructure will be minimal. What they will see is improved services and support to them. The biggest impact from this project is really on us, internal Ivy Tech faculty and staff, and the communities we serve as we strengthen those community relationships. This restructure, we think, will provide clarity for students on where resources are available to them and how to find them. Our focus on students right now is ensuring they're enrolled for the fall, and we have the resources available for them to succeed when they get here. For example, we want to make sure they're well-prepared for our new LMS, Ivy Learn, and that's where our student communication focus will be over the summer and into the fall.
Sue, how will we communicate this process?
On Friday, each of our colleagues should have received an email with information on where to find the recording of Friday's town hall. All of that information is located in my Ivy on the employee dashboard. We have an organizational structure page there as well. We will continue to post FAQs there later this week with the answers we provided today, in case they didn't like how we talked to one another, as well as more details of those questions that come along that we didn't get to today.
Sure.
This section will continuously be updated over the next weeks, months, and year.
Great. Will there be ongoing intentional communication, perhaps a central depository of information that employees can refer to? What about internal communication as a critical component of change management? Will there be an ongoing place where all questions and answers are compiled?
Yes, there will be ongoing internal communications to Ivy Tech staff and faculty. We have that area on my Ivy as I shared, under the employee dashboard, where we have put a link to Friday's town hall and the handout that we provided. This is where you will find ongoing communications about the organizational restructure, along with FAQs that will be updated. And we will likely have more town halls, not just you and I, Andy, but others who are deeply involved in the restructure and use those to help educate all of us as we go forward with this change process we're in.
Well, how about at the campus level? Will there be campus meetings about the restructure?
That's really going to be determined by campus leadership. We know some campuses will see very little direct change, others will see significant. Some campuses have already scheduled meetings where they will be meeting with faculty and staff to answer questions. We leave that to local campus leadership. Andy, you, and Kristen, Morland, and I, along with the organizational restructure team, so... Andy, you, and Kristin, Morland, and I, along with the organizational restructure team, certainly will be happy to conduct meetings on campus, and in fact, I think we have several scheduled already.
Fantastic. So here we are. I can't believe it. Thirty-one pages later, we kid you not, the closing question. So how are we going to measure success? Specifically, the question is, how is success going to be measured?
Well, it's a great question, because you don't do changes like this for change's sake. We have started to define success for this project and its implementation, and will continue to refine this over the implementation period. First, we made the case for change by interviewing more than 200 of our own Ivy Tech team members. And second, we received executive support from our state board of trustees and our campus-level leaders for this approach. We are now creating change implementation plans and developing metrics for their success. Our first metric will be employee satisfaction diagnostics that we plan to measure quarterly. You may recall, and I'm sure many out there recall, taking a survey this past March. It's providing us some information about how satisfied employees are here at Ivy Tech. In addition to taking the pulse of our employees, we will set additional metrics by July 1. The nine original key challenges that we set to solve will also be reflected in those metrics. Optimistically, we hope this will drive increased enrollment, persistence, completions and placement of our students into high-demand, high-wage jobs across the state, helping Hoosiers successfully return and complete high-quality degrees and credentials, as well as transfer into those high-demand degree programs with our four-year partners. Reaching for those 50,000 degrees and credentials a year is a big stretch, but one that Indiana needs us to aspire. We will continue to reinforce change by diagnosing issues as they arise, rewarding success, and celebrating intermediate wins. We also pledge to continue to be transparent with you and to communicate our progress along the way. This is an exciting time of change for Ivy Tech, and we're relying on your unwavering commitment to making Indiana an even greater place to live, learn, and work. We know that these changes will help us put the community back in Community College, and ensure Ivy Tech is structured to serve Indiana's students, communities, and employers for the next decade. Thank you so much for bearing with us during this long town hall. We hope to talk to you soon in the future, and thank you in advance for all you do to serve Ivy Tech, our students, communities, and employers. Have a great week.
Thanks so much.